You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order, special meeting of the Board of Fire Commissioners, Thursday, February 16th, 2023. Proposed budget in Fire Chief Mahoney, we'll call on you to give us an update.
All right, so as always, we try to make sure that, you know, we come in as flat in our increased requests as possible, but it's, of course, not always possible, especially in the current inflationary environment. All of the top portion under, you know, your personnel, your personnel services, those for the most part are contractual. So, you know, you'll see that the increases are right around two and the contractual increase provided to the union or agreed upon with the union was two and a half percent. So mostly the accounts are in line with that. The areas where you might see an increase that is out of, kind of out of that would be, for instance, salaries, don't always follow that because we have firefighters in the step process. So they're going, you know, new hires are hired at 70%, then they go to 80, 90, and 100%. And then stipends are based upon some of our medics dropping a stipend or getting additional stipends, and they did have an increase in the stipends in their contract. So that's what that number reflects. So that kind of, the only thing that I'd like to open up for discussion is, you know, giving thought to the decrease in volunteer response. We have talked about this. It's, it's become extremely unreliable, especially during the daytime hours, but overall, to get more than one staffed engine, staffed meaning, you know, you have enough volunteers to, to call it a viable fire company, is getting less and less. And we've talked about that on, you know, going on for a while now, but it's, it's at critical level. So we need to start talking about increasing staffing again. However, knowing that, you know, the uncertainty of where our economy is right now, in the fact that we really haven't discussed it with anybody beyond the Fire Commission, I think in fairness, it's, how can we put our finger in the dike and still kind of, you know, give us a chance to write the strategic plan, present that publicly, give it to all the other decision makers, the Board of Finance, the RTM, the public at large? We, we need another good year. But I did put in overtime hours to staff Station 9, Monday through Friday, eight in the morning till six at night. That number's $200,000. So that's, I created a new line. It doesn't currently exist in the budget, but I created it for discussion.
Quick question on that. Is that 200,000, is that considered overtime or replacement time? Like you have to work.
They, that's, I budgeted at straight time, but there'll be some additional overtime costs because of some people inevitably, especially if we have two positions that are getting filled.
That's only if we have anybody willing to work those hours.
Right. And so what I, what I also did, and just, just for discussion purposes, is I did the calculations for hiring two daytime firefighters as we have in the past. So if we were to hire two daytime firefighters and both of them happen to be at 100% because we hired laterals and they were both in a family insurance plan, it would, it would be roughly $270,000. So you're only talking about 70,000 more to hire two.
Not close all the Bennys, everything that will come out of human resource or whatever? Does that come out of ours or human resource extra?
That's the whole cost to the town of Branford.
Yeah, okay.
For two.
That's, yeah, for two, yeah.
So are we proposing that we're going to hire the two?
Well, that's what I wanted to leave it to the board and discuss.
Okay. Because otherwise, if I'm following this, to staff Station 9, you'd have to take two people and send them down there, and then you'd have to backfill it at headquarters, right?
Or someone off duty.
Right. So there's the two options that are on the table would be to cover it via overtime, which presents pros and cons. There will be additional half pay costs, so it could approach the cost of, of hiring the two full-time people anyways. And then it's the willingness of the individuals to work. Right now, I have, you know, four vacancies due to injury.
Right.
How do you find those people?
You know, when we, we have to, we have to cover those, if we had to cover those in addition to these other overtime positions, I think it would place a burden on our staff that we can't really. So my recommendation in, in kind of thinking this through in a more, would be to go as we have in the past, there's always already provisions in the contract to hire daytime firefighters. They would work that Monday through Friday schedule. What we would do is we would bring them to headquarters and put more experienced people down at Station 9.
Okay.
So that, that would be a proposal.
But we'd staff two, right? Just two in Station 9?
We'd have two, two people at Station 9, and only during those daytime hours.
Right, okay.
To start. You know, long range, we really need to put a second engine on duty with two people.
Remember back in 1963, that's all we're doing.
With an ambulance or without? Like would they jump?
Right, no, right now, I would leave it without, you know, they would still go on medicals in their district and probably keep Rescue 2 up here. I think that would operationally be, make the most sense.
Chief?
Yes.
Was this proposal part of your discussions with Jim Finch and Jamie?
We're having that discussion tomorrow, Commissioner.
Okay.
So the way we worded the resolution tonight is if there's any changes based on those discussions, and of course, what the Board of Finance ultimately does.
Right, right.
So, you know, our, your approval of our budget tonight would be with those changes.
Yeah. Well, looking at all, let's just all be honest, I mean, we have a decline. I mean, our volunteers are great, when they can get there, they're the best. But we definitely, we count on, on the first assignment, you count on a volunteer engine company showing up with a crew, and that's not happening, so we know that. Then we ask for a backup. I mean, it's just staff, it's a staffing thing during the day right now.
I think anybody who listens to the radio and understands the fire service and understands our, you know, us in comparison to similar sized communities, our workload on our people on a daily basis is probably double. And there's going to be a burnout factor, especially with the paramedics, that, you know, and it's just a matter of time, because we, we had that structure fire the other day with the car fire in the, in the carport. It happened to be in a period where we were at a lull. Everybody, all the career staff that was, that was working that day was available. Not half an hour after that call, we cleared it, we did what, another six medicals within an hour? There's just not enough stretch anymore.
How long is a typical call, just on that?
On a, for the ambulance runs, you're, you're talking about an hour and 20 minutes to an hour and a half.
Okay.
And of course, 70, so that's, we lose four firefighter paramedics when those ambulances are out. And typically, what happens, as you know, then when we, even if we had a commercial ambulance coming to do the transport, we still have to ride the first responder until that happens. So Rescue 2 is on the next medical, Engine 1's on the next medical.
So roughly two hours, you know, roughly?
Yeah.
I, I just don't know how you guys do it. You have, you've had, in 10 years, you've had almost 900 additional calls a year, and you're doing almost 18 calls a day on average, this is average. You multiply that times two, how many, you know, I mean, it's like, I don't see how, I mean, we've been battling this from day one, under staff, under staff.
So I, I think, Paul, what, what we've discussed, and I think it's worthy of discussion with the public, and certainly when we go to present before the Board of Finance, I know that the first question Joe Mooney's going to ask is, are you just going to keep coming back every year and asking for me, Power Chief? And that's a legitimate question, which is why we want to put this long-range plan into writing.
Well, I have an answer too. You know, you're, we're putting up 180 new apartment buildings.
Exactly.
We're putting up, we're building at a rapid pace, but yet our services aren't keeping up with this pace. And that's, I have a problem with that because, you know, we don't want to sacrifice our service because of all these buildings going up. Now, you know, wait till people, I mean, they're being constructed now, but wait till they're in effect, what's that going to leave us? You know, you're talking, you know, 180 units, you know you're going to get a call there a day, I mean, it's like, it's, you have the elderly down there on Monowees, you have, you know, this is something that we really have to seriously consider.
East Main, 595, 55.
I think we need to really consider this with our staffing.
We have a lot of new development staffing in town.
Well, you know, Paul, I think that's really sort of the answer to the question, are you going to come back every year? The answer to that probably is yeah.
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 Until the town planning process includes adding the, the financial impact of all the development.
Right, Kathy, I agree.
Well, and there's also the equity of service aspect where, you know, the standard of care is to have a fire engine or a first responder vehicle within four minutes of your, you know, most of your community. That's the standard. And we have two fixed locations, headquarters in Station 9, and then, you know, where we're not providing an equitable level of services out in the east portion of town towards Guilford and into Stony Creek, because it just physically, we're located here. So, you know, eventually, we would need to consider adding a station out east with that other engine company. And that's what we want to show in our plan, is the fully built-out plan covering the greatest majority of the town within that response time of four minutes, and also, you know, show the various models that, that maybe we could use, and what's the best model out there? I mean, there is, there is the possibility of hiring a, or coming to an agreement with a commercial ambulance service to take our priority, you know, our lower acuity calls, nursing homes that are emergencies, drunks, you know, alcohol related and, and other substance abuse issues and psychiatric emergencies that are lower acuity. The problem is that, you know, we, we gain revenue from those calls. So, you know, there's the pro of sloughing off the service to somebody else, but we lose that revenue as well, and then we have to look at, well, what is the benefit, what is really the, the cost versus, the risk versus benefit of doing that to us?
Well, you also sacrifice the quality.
Yeah, 100%.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's another very important point.
That's why I think all of us are here, because we want to provide this town, you know, we're paying our taxes, we want a good service. And that's basically what it comes down to. I don't see, I, I don't, I'm totally against outsourcing or having another, I don't want that. I mean, it's, you know, and then, like you said, I mean, you have AMR, I mean, I don't want to say like, but it's like their response time, you call them, how long is it going to take them to get here? I mean, you know, we've, we've been pretty good so far, I mean.
Yeah, we have, we, I mean, we provided excellent level of service, and as you know, like we mentioned the last time, you know, we get cards and thank yous and, and share them with the commission and the members, and, you know, last year, we did 6,415 calls and we didn't have a single complaint. That's pretty, you know, that's a good level of service, and so there, yeah, there's that, there's, that's one of the risks.
Right.
So if the town wants to continue to have the level of service it has, you know, but we're, we're, we've lost our ability to stretch.
Right.
We're at maximum, and, you know, our, we still have to maintain the fire department. And the fire department is, the what, the model that you want is you want that fire engine sitting in the station with those firefighters, you know, doing their daily, daily stuff, ready to respond at a moment. You don't want them at your neighbor's house.
Right.
Because when you call 911, you want that response, and right now, that's not a guarantee. It's, and there's always going to be the big ones, right? And that's when you use mutual aid, but you shouldn't be using it as a, as a regular. And so what's happening is we're covering a lot of our calls, our ambulance calls, but we're taking those firefighters off the suppression units to put them on that fourth and fifth ambulance.
Right.
And then, even then, we're still getting mutual aid to come in, cover the next one, and Engine 1, our only suppression unit, is now tied up as the first responder until that transaction happens. So.
So you mentioned this, like, eight to whatever, daytime. Are we going to hire full-time people for this, or are we going to take part-time? I mean, I don't understand how.
Well, so if, that's what I presented, the two things, we could, we could do both, we could hire on overtime and just pay the existing employees overtime, but the downside to that is the burnout factor and the overtime.
Or if we have.
It almost costs as much to hire.
We have four guys down now, I mean, you know.
Yeah. So I would recommend we, we go back to hiring the day guys, and we, but that's, that's part of our discussion for tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
That I wanted to have with, you know.
Powers that be.
Yeah, the powers that be.
Yeah. But I think we're at the, at the point of the, there's a wall and a can, we've been kicking it, and that can is like, where's the can? It's not even there, behind Henry, it's disintegrated. Let's be honest.
Can't sit in the wall.
Yeah, we know, it's, it's been time, and we talk about it, but I think it's now it's time, I think, you know, we have a lot of feelings that go out there toward everything that, putting, you know, people in stations now and doing it, and it's been 60 years, things change here back then too, you know? They just knocked down the old fire headquarters over there on John Street, then it moved over here next door, and then it came over here, you know, we're on, you know?
You know, we've been down this road before, being very shorthanded on staffing and everything, and I remember having this conversation with Chief Ahern at one point, and it was, it was horrible, but the situation we're in now is exponentially worse. It really is.
Well, and like the chief said, we're also band-aiding things with the automatic aid stuff that we're doing. It's nice.
We had three on Saturday.
It's nice that they come, and it's nice that we go there. But I think, you know, again, we're on camera, the public should know that, you know, not only are we relying on these tables, but these tables are relying on us. For the same issues, they don't have enough manpower either.
I know.
And, you know, at one of these points, Engine 1's going to be out of town on one of these eight calls, and if we don't have an Engine 9, we don't have anything.
Well, they were back up there on Waldo Street, they had a work in fire on Saturday, in the afternoon, remember? Yeah, so they were there.
I believe they came to the condo fire too?
They did.
Yeah, they were there up there, yeah.
So it's a great reciprocal thing.
Oh, yeah. But I think they understand, we're both working together. They got the same problem, we all do.
And Guilford does the same.
Yeah.
So there's two things that happen with, the increased call volume also increases the revenue, and the revenue numbers are coming, gonna, they're going to come in hotter this year than they have in quite a while, which, you know, which is an offset to the service, it's not, it doesn't cover it, but it's an offset. And then, the other thing that Chief Kozak and I are going to work on over this coming year is to get that ISO number, rating number down. We're currently a four, we really think we can do the work to get a two, and then we'd like to be able to figure out, you know, exactly, it's going to definitely be a cost savings to everybody in the town as far as their insurance rates. What we want to try to do is put a number on that, and it's not, it's, it may be as simple for us as if we go to our town's insurer and we say, if you're insuring the town of Branford Buildings, and we're an ISO four, you know, what, how much would it cost if we were a two? And that will give us a number, and it will give it maybe a general way to be able to extrapolate out the cost per, you know, to the community that they would save.
I can remember the days when our numbers were down, so did they tell you why it's up? Why are we a four?
No, we've, we've.
Never been below.
We've never been.
I thought we were a three one time, a long time ago.
I think they shot for that, but it never happened.
Oh, gosh.
I think we got to a four, we're trying for a three, you know, yeah.
Honestly, things like that.
Interesting, okay.
The islands are a nine, I think, right?
Yeah.
They're separate.
They, they use a different term for it now, but yeah, they're, you know, and that's, that's the other thing, we're still responsible for, as, as the Branford Fire Department, we are, we are truly become the all hazards fire department, and we're still responsible for the marine emergencies, including, you know, our more than 10 marinas, our islands, our coasts, and putting the, you know, eventually, when we do have full-time staffing at Station 9, one of the responsibilities that company would be the boat, you know, that would be, we would move it, and they would take over that.
So you would move the boat from Stony Creek to?
No, the boat in Stony Creek would stay in Stony Creek, but the current Marine 2 would be moved to.
Oh, okay.
To the, to the south side of the river. Right now, it's on the north side, and when we need to run that boat, we take our only paid engine and we put it on the boat, and it goes and does the call. Because we're, you know, we can run one call at a time, that's kind of what we can do. And, you know, after that, we rely on 100% on volunteers, and that's just not, it's just not enough. And again, I don't want to insult the great work that they do, but I don't ever see us getting rid of all of them, but we will have a consolidation at some point. A further consolidation. It's just a matter, it's just a fact, it's. So anyways, that, that's obviously the elephant in the room and the big.
And hydrants again.
Hydrants again, I did, I did put in the increase for the hydrants this year.
Do we think it's going to be that, or we're not sure?
I'm probably unsure. We've, what we've done in the last couple of years is we've kind of left it flat, and then we've gone to contingency, so we've talked to Jim Finch ahead of time, we say, listen, you know, just make sure you have enough in contingency to cover this, and it's worked.
We could hire six fire people right now for that, get that out of our budget, but keep the money in there, and, you know, and move that toward Eversource, wherever that goes, whoever has that in the town budget, just saying. It's that six more seats at the table, plus the two we want, we got eight.
The thing that it does in our budget is it.
Engine 1, car six, response, priority one, medical.
It definitely increases the percent increase, so if you have a taxpayer or a decision maker who's looking at the percent increase, they, they see that big percent, well, a small percent increase in the hydrants means, because it's almost a million dollars, is a very large increase overall in the budget. So I'd love to see it move out, but we've been unsuccessful.
I talked to the chief the other day, that in years past, I used to talk to the people at the water company about the budget. They do their budget in January, so I would call them for the board to say, can you give us an idea of what the increase would be? And they would throw out a number, you know, and then we would add it to the budget, and then sometimes when we did our budget, okay, we were, we were okay, but it is, I mean, their budget is January, ours is July, so you just go with the number.
Yeah, there's very little that we can do.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, we can, we can petition the DPUC, that's about it, and they laugh in our general direction.
So we're talking about personnel. Let's go back to the SAFER Act, because I know what's out there, looking for higher first responders. I know I've talked to you about it, because I like to hire 32 right now, that's probably not going to happen, but there's some staffing here, but what do we know about that?
Well, we know it opened, it opened on the 13th, and we have 30 days to do it, so I don't, I don't know that, you know, we'll be able to get. If we apply, we can't apply for it without confirmation that the town would accept the grant, and, you know, so we have to go through the process. And, and once we, once the Board of Finance and the RTM agree that we need people, then we would certainly apply for the SAFER Grant, but I think we're going to miss the windows.
So that's going to be a summer job for us to go and present that to the Board of Finance.
Yeah, we, we're, our goal is to have this plan completed before our next cycle, so that we're ready to go. And, you know, that we would definitely apply for a grant.
We can get two people down there during the day would help, that's a start, huge start.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly, I mean, just because of the working schedules of our volunteers, that is the, the most critical timeframe, and it's our busiest time.
I know when we manned that station back a few months ago, that we could have responded to more calls, but the bridge was out, they could have went to more calls.
Yeah, well, when you look at our heat map of where the calls occur in the town, they occur along the Route 1 corridor, and then down into Idiannec, and then along the shoreline, especially in the summertime, that you get that increase of, of service. But don't forget, we don't have, right now, we don't have the new park side that's going to add. Not only more units, but there are family units now, so you're going to have more people in, in those units. And then, at some point, they will finish Anchor Reef, which is under construction. And then Atlantic Wire is still a approved.
It's viable.
Proposal that's still there, so that, that company would be integral to that whole increase in what's going on in that. Headquarters is situated for the great majority of calls, but then it would be Station 9 and out.
And out east.
Out east.
So the SAFER Grant is.
Out east is a big thing.
SAFER Grant, is that, is that offered every year, or?
It's, it could not be offered every year, it's, it's reauthorized if Congress approves it every year, so far that, so far that they have. It changes a little bit every year.
So SAFER Grant, if I understand, it's like the first year it's on them, and then the town faces.
The, the.
The parameters change.
The parameters do change.
We did it back when, remember?
So the last time, the last time, our SAFER Grant in 2018 was, it was a, I think it was 85, I forget what the parameters are, but they, it ended up being, out of $3 million cost, they picked up about $1.4 million of it. You know, the last year, we only got 35%.
Right, but still.
But still, it's, so it's a definite.
But it's solid.
It's a definite thing to do, if you know you're going to hire people, you, 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 you'd be ridiculous not to apply for that grant. It's not guaranteed, but you'd be ridiculous not to.
But also too, is being in the town, I mean, how could you refuse that? I mean, if we get offered it, I mean, you know, you're looking at a discounted.
Yeah, it's got to be a commitment though.
Yeah. It does, because you can't, you can't fire those guys, let them go after.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Because then you got to pay them back. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It gives the town time to plan financially for the increase in personnel that we need. I mean, it's a good fit.
Yeah, it's definitely an impact smoother.
So we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do it now because it's such a.
Not unless tomorrow they tell us something different.
Okay.
If they tell us tomorrow, we can go and IR8, you know, go and get it.
But, but like I said, I think from a planning perspective, to be able to, to really alert everybody again of our need, be able to articulate it in writing with all the data to support it, and, and in the meantime, put a finger in the dike, which would be hiring the two daytime, that would, that would be, I think, a reasonable response to our current situation.
Okay.
So if, if, if the Board agrees that it would be more beneficial to hire two daytime firefighters, full-time daytime firefighters, that would increase the budget, my budget request by about $70,000, so it would be, you'd be approving 7,686,345, and then the overall change would be 496,041.
So to staff those two guys for how long?
They would be Monday through Friday and.
For how long?
Three to five.
It would, it would be daytime year round.
Yeah, yeah. For just $70,000 more?
No, no, well, no, it would be 270, 270,000.
That's what all their benefits now.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so it would be, the, the difference would be in what you have in front of you would be an additional 70,000, because that include, or included is the 200 plus 70.
So just, so right now, just adding another 70,000 to what we currently have?
No, no, to the current request, which is 270,000.
We're proposing, I'm saying, because you already have the 200 in here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
270, yeah. And that takes care of all the fringe benefits.
So we would still need to get, you know.
We don't have to rely on, if we do that, we don't have to rely on trying to find coverage unless, you know, someone's out or something like that, but we just have two people there.
It's definitely the preferred way to go, because it, once you add in the FSLA overtime, you're probably going to approach that number anyway.
Which is 212 hours and 28-day cycle.
Okay, when we go before the Board of Finance, and you ask for this, they're going to ask how many calls for them, how many?
We'll have it, we'll have it.
We'll have it, no, no, I know, but that's one, it's going to be one of the first questions they're going to ask, is, Art, you're asking for these two extra people, how many calls?
You got to have a map, like the chief's going to show you to turn the page.
Well, I mean, it's, it's really.
You can't really go by it though, because it was kind of construed, but.
It's, it's really the increased, the overall increase in calls, because we share the call line, and, you know, like I said, that engine may be a slower engine than Engine 1, but it's going to be there, and the problem is, we don't have an engine here. So, you know, as you can see on page 34, too, our call volume has been steadily increasing year to year, and since, you know.
Let's just say we call.
From twenty thirteen to twenty twenty, uh, um.
Eight hundred and six.
Twenty twenty-two.
Eight hundred and six calls.
Yes, it's a, it's a big increase. Um.
Let's just say we call that Engine Three down there. I'm just using that number. Should be J nine.
How dare you?
Yeah, okay. Anyways, we know that truck is going, but then we may call Engine Six and Engine Six never goes, but Engine Three's going to get there for Engine Six. Cause Engine Six never went out in the air.
Okay.
Yep. That's all. J nine.
Um, so then, uh, other than the water company, which is, uh, is a, in the, um, non, non-personnel part of the budget.
Yeah.
Um, and just in response to the inflationary environment that we're in right now, we've, um, I've, I've added, um, I think very modest, you know, cause the, the issue with, with all these accounts is all right, you know, you could probably add seven percent to every single one of them, you know? That's how bad it is and it's still probably not going to be enough, but.
Exactly. Cause you're not really accounting for the inflation. So which leads me to my next question is, what did you put in for yourself and Chief Kozak? What was the?
Oh, our, uh, increase?
Yeah.
Um, we were, um, given a two point two five.
And that's, that's ridiculous.
Mm-hmm.
In my opinion.
Um.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So that.
The rate of inflation's eight percent roughly.
Yeah.
And you're going to get two? How does that work?
Town reference.
Exactly where they're. I mean, you know, I, I would say the firefighters should get more too, but they, but they're locking the contract, you know? Uh, you guys are not. I think you deserve more.
Yes, absolutely. That's who's, that's the, that's the leaders of the department. So.
I, I would suggest changing it to five.
I was going to say the same thing. Yep. Both to five percent. Yep. We should make that change.
Yeah, I would support that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, so right now, how did they determine that number? You did or who determined that?
Every year they put out there.
Yeah, every year the guidance comes from, um, Town Hall and for non-affiliated employees, whether they're department heads or, or not, they give a number. So, um, for part-time personnel, it was only two percent. And then for everybody else, it was two and a quarter.
But for two people that are on basically twenty-four seven?
Yeah.
I have no complaints at all. I'm just asking how they got that number.
Yeah, it's just past history.
Had it all passed one time and I remember, but I won't say it. Sitting at that meeting.
Yeah. So it, I, I mean, I'd just make that law amendment.
Yeah. Yeah, it's one of ours too.
So we all agree?
Yeah, five percent. Yeah.
Okay.
Those are the two nor, non-bargaining positions.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Chief and Assistant Chief. So. Anything else we need to talk about? Everything else is just kind of, um, standing up in procedure. How about any capital?
Um, yeah. So the capital account, um, we significantly reduced our capital asks, uh, since last year. Um, and, uh, so that's a good thing because it, you know, overall the department request won't be what we're asking for in addition to.
Mm-hmm. Is that because like, can you talk to me about this like truck?
Truck, well, truck, yeah. So it, it, the amount necessary in the apparatus sinking fund, um, plus don't forget we got the ambulance. We're still asking for the ambulance replacement account to be funded, but it's, it's gone down to a lesser number because we were able to get that ARPA money last year, which was, uh, which was good. So on page, um, thirty-four, twelve is the, uh, capital request at a glance. And, um, you can see, um, between, it's almost, it's, it's a three hundred and eighty thousand roughly less than our previous year's request. Um, so we're, we're, um, we just made the purchase of Engine One. Don't forget we got an additional appropriation, um, mid-budget year last year because of the, uh, to get that order in, um, which also allows us to ask for less. And then we re, we redid the apparatus replacement, um, sinking fund plan, which is on thirty-four thirteen. And, um, you know, as you go year to year, it does increase again. Um, but, you know, we feel we, we're, based on the numbers we have today and some, um, uh, planning for inflation, we've budgeted that in the plan where we think we'll get to what the numbers that we need when we, the year that it's, um, due to be replaced, especially now that we've removed that, uh, million and a half dollars or a million, it's probably going to be two million dollars by the time we get there is truck one. So that's going to be in the bonding plan now. Um, and I'm pretty confident that, you know, that'll, um, that this capital plan that is presented, um, will get us what we need. And we're very fortunate that the town does support sinking funds. It allows us to, you know, keep a stable amount of money in there typically without having these, um, very unusual inflationary years that we've had. But, um, typically the sinking fund allows for a more stable, um, funding of our very large capital item purchases by, um, you know, keeping that number pretty reasonable every year until we have enough saved where we can make that purchase.
How about staff cars?
Those are in the plan. Um, they're the twenty, they're listed as the twenty-twelve Tahos.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And so that would be the current Car Six, um, the current Car One and Two, and then those vehicles.
Will rotate down.
Move down.
Makes sense, yeah.
And we, and the, all of the, the two twenty-twelve Tahos would then be released to the town fleet. Um, and then, um, the one, one of them would remain to replace the excursion, which is the, uh, the spare.
Yeah.
So they're in the plan.
Mm-hmm. No, good job. Well covered.
Um, the, the rest of the capital items, just the typical stuff. So we have, uh, the, um, ambulance sinking fund, but we need, you know, we were able to fund it, uh, request less funding this year because of the, uh, you know, the money that they provided to us last year. The radio sinking fund, we're able to go back down to, um, to start to build that, that cycle up again. We, we made, um, significant purchase of, uh, radios to, uh, include interoperable radios this year and, and a bunch of our frontline mobiles, which, um, you know, so we can talk to all of our mutually partners. And then, um, we're, you know, we're, we're going to need to purchase that monitor defibrillator that we, um, that we do. Um, and then, um, one more, uh, one of the thirty thousand under ambulance equipment would be for the power load. Um, we're going to continue to add power loads to the two ambulances that don't currently have them. And, um, we, we've talked about the SCBA sinking funds, pretty much, um, that eighty-five thousand dollars a year was divided based on a, um, annual six percent increase, or actually it was a five percent increase, but annual five percent increase. So we're going to reevaluate that as we get closer to the end, which is like twenty twenty-five, where we're going to look at, you know, we may not need the amount of SCBAs that we currently have in the department, especially with the decline in the membership.
Yep.
Um, and that's it? You have anything to add, Brock?
Nope. Nice job, chief.
Um, we have, um, you know, just for, uh, everybody's viewing, the last page is, uh, thirty-four twenty shows our call volume and, and the ambulance revenue. Our twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-two ambulance revenue was one point eight. Um, like I explained last meeting, I truly feel we're going to hit our budgeted target and by the end of March. And then April, uh, May and June will give us a surplus, um, which I expect to be, um, at least two billion dollars, if not over. So that would be, um, you know, at least a three hundred thousand dollar, um, of, of additional funds that would go into the, the town's general fund for, uh, for their fund balance. So we paid for ourselves.
Yeah.
We cost two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars more last year in the operating budget and we're going to bring in three hundred thousand more than they thought. The way I look at that is our, at least as far as the operating budget of the fire department.
Right.
We didn't cost you anything last year.
Did a new rate just go into effect too?
Yeah, the new rate goes in January. It went into effect January. So as long as our call volume increases and our ALS rate is sixty-two percent.
The way it's been every, uh, after twelve o'clock until six o'clock in the morning. It's midnight to, they, no one's sleeping in this joint. It's a, yeah.
I know.
Pick the beds out. Cause they're not, they're not sleeping. They're working. Like you said, it's like double everything you do here now. So, so. All right, good. Any questions before we go to, um?
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, well, we're, yeah, we're going to have them. Yeah, I'm going to ask for a motion, but we need to have an amendment, uh, put onto it.
Right.
So the motion be to.
A couple amendments, right?
Yeah, two amendments, yeah. One is to increase the, um, uh, the increase of both the, uh, fire chief and the assistant fire chief from the proposed two point five? Is that what it is, chief? Or two point two five?
Two point two five.
Two five percent.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I voted. The unanimous. And the other one is to, in lieu of the overtime for Station Nine, to look at putting, adding two new daytime personnel, which would increase the budget approximately seventy thousand plus or minus dollars?
Well, it would, it would, it would increase the current.
Yeah, the, the current, yeah, request.
That hasn't been approved yet.